I will now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance and also those that are viewing the meeting on G10 television. To begin tonight, I will, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight I'm going to ask an Eagle Scout candidate, Mr. Ben Hall, who's joining us, he's with Troop 790, the Boy Scouts of America. And I'll ask him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we always give you thanks. Thanks for your blessings upon us as the city of Jacksonville, and your blessings upon us each individually. Our hearts and minds were heavy this evening with the occurrence at the Washington Navy Yard. We pray that you would console those who mourn, that you heal those who were injured, and that you would sustain us as a nation, as we have to go continually through these acts of senseless violence. We pray for our military, who are serving us here and around the world, for their safety and for their anxious families. As always, we remember and pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would always be with them. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel, you have before you a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting along with the consent items. We've been asked to take non-consent item number four off the agenda, and at this time I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have minutes for the meetings of September 3, 2013, which is a special workshop meeting, and also on that same day, the regular meeting.
Mayor Phillips, I move that we approve the September 3, 2013 special workshop meeting minutes and our September 3, 2013 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I have three presentations to make tonight, and I'm going to come around front there. I would like to ask Captain William Lee from the Fire Department, and also Ms. Sherri Slater, our Assistant County Manager, to join me up front. And thank you both for coming tonight. Today, the Jacksonville Fire Department, along with the Ansel County Department of Social Services, hosted the Pink Hills Day in the New River Shopping Center in Jacksonville. And I had the occasion to visit the exhibition today, and I was just blown away with what I saw over there. It was a really fascinating, fascinating display over there, for such a great cause. Since 2007, the Pink Hills Tour has been bringing its pink fire trucks to communities from coast to coast. Five pink fire trucks were on display today in New River Shopping Center. The goal was to raise cancer awareness, and to honor and support those who are battling the disease. This was the tour's first visit to the Jacksonville area, and again, it was a very good turnout today. And, you know, the thing about it is, women who battle cancer, individuals who support these women, those who wish to sign in memory of a woman who fought cancer, were welcome to sign one of the vehicles. And I took the opportunity myself, from my own personal experience, I lost my mother-in-law and my sister two, three years ago, this year, to cancer after long battles with the disease. And anything, as I said earlier this morning, at the New River Shopping Center, anything that can bring that awareness and prevention, can get us to that point where people don't have to suffer, and those loved ones that are deprived of their presence on this earth do not have to feel that pain anymore. But it's a great, a great opportunity, it was a great opportunity to see something unusual today. Never seen a pink fire truck before. Written in a pink Cadillac in the Christmas parade. Never seen a pink fire truck. But I have a proclamation I want to read tonight. Whereas Guardians of the Ribbon Incorporated, doing business as the Pink Hills Tour, is a national nonprofit organization consisting of firefighters, police officers, and leaders in the community, whose sole purpose is raising awareness for the fight against cancer. And whereas, the Pink Hills Tour began in September 2013, encouraging public safety professionals, local leaders, and citizens throughout the community to wear pink in honor of all women, and to join forces to help them in their fight against cancer. And whereas, the spirit of this campaign is to fight for those who have lost the ability to fight for themselves, asking for public support, and raising understanding and awareness to all citizens. And whereas, anything is possible when good people devote themselves to a cause that does so much, so much good and benefits so many. And whereas, the city of Jacksonville was honored to have the Pink Hills Tour on public display in the city of Jacksonville today, and I was, again, honored to attend and present them with a proclamation recognizing their efforts on behalf of cancer survivors. And whereas, it is also fitting to recognize the efforts of our Public Safety Department, for their efforts to bring the Pink Hills Tour to our community, and raising cancer awareness, and honoring those who have survived, who are currently battling cancer. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim Pink Hills Day in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage all citizens to join me in commending them, along with our Public Safety Department, for their efforts to raise awareness in the community. And I want to thank you all for making that possible, helping make that possible. Thank you. We thank the whole council for allowing us to have this opportunity. We look for opportunities to touch our citizens, and this was the day that we were able to do that. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sherri, did you want to say anything on behalf of the county?
I just, yeah, I wanted to, I'm a little short on some of these folks, sorry. Just wanted to thank Captain Lee and the staff at the Fire Department, as well as the city, for allowing us to partner on this. Consolidated Human Services for Ansel County was so thrilled to be a part of it, and I think we had a great turnout today. We had a great time. A lot of very moving testimonials came out of today, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year if you'll have us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, one additional, one additional side comment. At the request of the mayor and council, the Freedom Fountain was turned to pink this evening. So if you get a chance to come downtown and see the pink fountain, we would enjoy you seeing it.
Great. About our staff a picture or two. Next, I'd like to ask Ben Hall, who led our pledge tonight, I think, or your parents here with you tonight, grandparents, you can have them come up. You got your brothers here too? Oh, bring them all. They can share in your accolades up here. I'd also like to ask Deputy Chief Trader. You're a big Eagle Scout. Recruit him.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I'd like to say that Ben Hall is an Eagle Scout candidate from Troop 790. He planned and organized a construction project to erect fencing at the Jacksonville Police Training Facility. Very nice. He facilitated the purchase of materials, developed a working team of 15 scouts and supporters of Troop 790, and led the team on a rainy Saturday to complete the project. The new fencing helps maintain control of the different training areas, when there are different groups on the site, and it also assists in maintaining the landscaping and enhances the appearance of the facility. For your contribution to the Jacksonville Department, I keep saying Police Department, it's now the Department of Public Safety. Okay. I have a certificate of appreciation to present to you, along with a Jacksonville Police Department coin. Ain't that pretty? Nice. Yeah. That's a keepsake. I don't think you can use it for, I don't think there's any legal tender, but. Thank you. That's been needed for what you're talking about there. Appreciate the work. That's really good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's something we had planned to do for a long, long time, at least 15 years I know of, but finally got done, huh? Okay. Very good. Now I'd like to ask, for Minority Enterprise Development Day, I have a proclamation for that. I would like to ask Lorette Lagone and your crew. Always good to have you all come over from the chamber. Lorette? Hey, Mayor.
Hello, Mayor, how are you?
How's that going?
Good.
Hey. In recognition of the outstanding contributions that minority businesses make to our economy, the Jacksonville-Ansel Chamber of Commerce has requested the presentation of this proclamation tonight, which I'm very proud to read for you. Whereas, the Jacksonville-Ansel Chamber of Commerce, in collaboration with Coastal Carolina Community College's Small Business Center, have worked to facilitate the growth of local small and minority-owned businesses. And whereas, Minority Enterprise Day 2013 will be observed on October 4, 2013, by the Jacksonville-Ansel Chamber of Commerce and Coastal Carolina Community College's Small Business Center, to acknowledge outstanding contributions. And whereas, small and minority-owned businesses embody the timeless American values of hard work, integrity, and optimism, and contribute to the economic stability of the country. And whereas, Minority Enterprise Day offers attendees the opportunity to increase awareness of programs and services obtainable through the federal, state, and local governments, as well as to network with small businesses. And whereas, the Jacksonville-Ansel Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber's Minority Business Services Committee will honor a Minority Business Entrepreneur of the Year, and the late Linda Richardson, Minority Business Advocate of the Year. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim, October 4, 2013, as Minority Enterprise Development Day in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage all of our citizens to join with me in honoring the important roles small and minority-owned businesses have in our society. Furthermore, I commend the men and women whose ingenuity, integrity, and innovative spirit contribute to the free enterprise system on which the American economy has, was founded. Lorette, I thank you very much, and I would like to.
We also want to thank the town of Jacksonville, the city of Jacksonville, sorry, Mountain Girl still says town, I can't help it. But anyway, the city of Jacksonville, they give so much to help us put this on. The Jacksonville Commons is the location, it's a beautiful facility, and the staff there, they help us so much make this event a success. So please join us on October the 4th, from 9 to 1, and come see what kind of fascinating businesses we have in Jacksonville. And Millian, I'll give you 30 seconds.
Since I was forced to come to the mic, I will share with you, I'm really excited this year, more than I've been in the past years, and that's because Minority Enterprise Development Day has been noted as a statewide event. I had the privilege and the opportunity to be in the company of Governor Pat McCrory and Secretary of State Sharon Decker, two Thursdays ago, in Raleigh, at the Convention Center, where it's gone statewide. And I was sharing with the governor, because I got to talk with him briefly, in Ansel County, we've been doing this for eight years, and we're very proud that this community acknowledges minority-owned businesses, and please come out and help support, and be a part of this great signature event that we host each year at the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. And Lorette, we may be a city, but we're still town folk. I'm going to take just a slight pause here for a second. I know some of you came for their presentations, and I'll give you an opportunity to leave. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you want, it's probably not going to last very long, but you're welcome to stay. All right, counsel, that brings us to our first session of public comment for the evening, and we do not have anyone that has signed up. And I will ask, as I normally do, is there anyone present wishes to speak at public comment that did not get a chance to sign the register? Okay, we're going to move along now to Agenda Item Number 5, and this is Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority Appointment. And, hold it here. Vacancy has occurred on the J-TDA. The position must be occupied by a person representing individuals who are affiliated with the businesses that collect the tax in the city. The original appointee for this position has left the area. Mayor Protem Mike Lozaro is the chairman of the Authority Board of Directors, and I'm going to ask you, Mayor Protem Lozaro, for any nominations that you have.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips, excuse me. After some interviews, I would like to recommend Ms. Lindsay Thomas for the appointment to a term expiring June 30, 2014, and also Rick Young, who I would like to ask to serve as a shadow member for the Authority. Both outstanding candidates, and will be valuable to the board and our work.
Are there any other nominations?
Mayor, I may add, Lindsay Thomas, she is currently the general manager for the Hampton Inn Suites, and Rick Young is the general manager for the Suburban, and also supervisor for Main State Hotel. Great, great individuals.
All righty then. Any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed and the candidates be elected by acclamation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That brings us to Agenda Item Number 6. This is designation, excuse me, just a minute, designation of voting and alternate voting delegates for the 2013 North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Business Meeting. Right now, there's two members of council who are currently registered to attend, are myself and council member Jerome Willingham, and we need a voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate.
I would move that the mayor be designated as the voting delegate and the alternate councilman, Willingham.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I assume that there, I've not seen anyone else come in, there's no one else wants to speak at public comments, so we'll forego that. Now we will start with the reports, and I'm going to start with Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, I was saddened to hear this past weekend and beginning of the week, the passing of Wick Bode. Wick was very active in, the Boy Scouts was a teacher, very involved in science and environmental education, but primarily, I always associate him with the Boy Scouts, a Boy Scout leader for many, many years. Ansel County will certainly miss him, and may he rest in peace, and condolences to the family. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Mayor Phillips, just wanted to report how much I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing all of you and a lot of the folks at home at the Riverwalk, New River Palooza Festival this weekend at the Riverwalk Crossing, starting Friday night, I think about 6, 6 to 10, and it's going to run all day Saturday. I know Betty and Sandy have put a lot of work into this, they've, they're molding this into more of a musical event, so there'll be a variety of music played throughout the evening and night, nothing too disturbing, Mr. Manager there, right there. But it's a free, fun, family-friendly event, and they've ordered up some fantastic fall weather for this weekend, so come see us.
That's great. Make sure to get down there, please.
The Environmental and Apairance Advisory Committee is currently accepting Business and Residential Apairances Awards for the month of, excuse me, the month of October. So if you would like to nominate a business or residential appearance award to a business or to a resident, please contact the city of Jacksonville, or go and visit the website to place your nominations. Also, the Tree Board is considering a rewrite of the tree ordinance, and is currently evaluating potential changes to the memorial program. And also, the committee is also planning a tour with the city, excuse me, with the city of, excuse me, with the Jacksonville Police Department, in regards to the environmental crime prevention program for the city of Jacksonville. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bittner?
Just want to point out that the Civic Affairs Committee did itself proud in organizing the 9/11 Patriots Day last week, a very moving ceremony, very heart-tugging, specifically to hear the comments of Lieutenant Colonel Russ.
Jameson.
Jameson, who spoke of the experience when, he was in the Pentagon, when the plane hit the Pentagon, and I was glad to participate, and glad to see many of our council people out there, and county commissioners as well. That's all.
Mayor Protem Lozaro?
Thank you, Mayor. I told Jerry that I didn't have a report, but as usual, I lied, but I'll try to be brief. Like to give you a report on our TDA, Tourism Development Authority. I'd mentioned previously that we're working with North Star for community branding. Our work continues with them, and we have another creative session that is being planned to advance some concepts for a strapline or community moniker that will be used with the art. We're still actively working on that. As mentioned earlier, several of the first events of the new fiscal year are set for this weekend, as Randy, councilman, mentioned earlier, the Riverwalk Festival and the New River Palooza, set for Friday, September 20th and 21st, at Riverwalk Crossing Park. There will also be water-based activities and traditional festival fun at that event. Please, please join us. Tourism development funds were used to help make runners aware of the opportunity to travel here to participate in the Marine Corps Half Marathon, which is set for this weekend. More than 700 runners have signed up in the expanded offering. After several hotels have reported that many of the bookings were based solely on the new expanded offering, one of the items the staff advocated was to make these races have a relationship with the area hotels, and additionally, for the events on the base to have off-base activities that would entice visitors to stay at local Jacksonville lodging facilities. The Marine Corps Half Marathon will have the racer's packets available for a pickup at a Jacksonville lodging facility. In all, the Authority has allocated $156,000 to organizations and festivals to develop overnight stays in Jacksonville lodging facilities. So the bulk of our program of work is heads-on beds, and creating and supporting activities that not only facilitate heads-on beds, but are also great events for our local citizens to attend, as well as people that come from out of town to visit our community. And we're making significant progress in that, in that area. Our next meeting is set for September 26. We have Lynn D. Minjes, she is the president and chief executive officer of the North Carolina Restaurant and Lodging Association, and she will meet with us about tourism trends in the state, so I encourage anyone that's interested in that to please come join us and listen to the valuable information. Also, Mr. Massey, Ron Massey and I attended the Governor's Military Affairs Commission, representing you, Mayor Phillips, and we look forward to serving on the committee, and it was our first meeting, sort of organizational meeting, and I will further bring reports as we progress our work in that area. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mine will be short and sweet. I had the opportunity Saturday to attend the Senior Expo, Ansel County Senior Expo. It was very well-attended. They packed it this year, and I think council member Thomas can attest to the parking situation out at the county multi-purpose complex out there. He tried to attend the Farmer's Day, Farmer's Market out there, and it was tough, tough parking. Of course, I understand you made all the money selling your parking.
Right.
I don't want to say nothing about that, but. And also, I would like to, again, express my thanks to the folks on the Pink Hills display this morning. That was very impressive, for a very good cause. And I want to thank the council for entrusting me with your delegate vote for the North Carolina League of Municipalities Convention coming up in October. And with that, Dr. Woodruff.
Mayor, just a couple of quick items. Number one, the mayor and council are inviting the public to a groundbreaking ceremony, which will be this coming Thursday, September 19th, at 3:30. That will be on the grounds of the Fire Station 2 location, that is generally at the corner of Indian and Gun Branch. Again, 3:30, the public is invited. There will not be a dedication of a pink fire truck, though, Mayor. Two other quick things. On Monday afternoon, the Chamber of Commerce conducted an unveiling of the Voting Rights Task Force plaque, which is to be located at the Kerr Recreation Center. This mic keeps going on and off, so I apologize. But that occurred this past Monday. I had a very good turnout, about 40 citizens. Earlier this summer, we had the dedication. Thank you, John. Earlier this summer, we did have the dedication of the LP Willingham plaque. Both of those are part of the Chamber of Commerce African-American Heritage Trail. While the county government has supplied the funds for most of those, the city council, the mayor and council authorized the purchase of these two, because they're located in the city, but more specifically because of their specific relevance to the form of government that we have. So we thank you for that. Lastly, we would mention that several weeks ago, a citizen mentioned the condition of Belfork. We have had, we have had Parks and Recreation crews out clearing the right-of-way in that area. We apologize to the mayor and council for that getting overgrown, but that has now been accomplished. And as always, mayor and council, we thank you for your leadership and the dedicated service you give this community.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, there's our pink fountain. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?